Good evening. Chair calls the order to legislative session day twenty-three dash zero zero five. Please join us in standing for the pledge followed by the opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Gracious and loving Father, we ask you to bless this council with your grace, wisdom, and conviction as we continue to legislate on behalf of the citizens of Harford County. We look to you, Lord, for hope, joy, and peace. Guide us through tonight's agenda and help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. We ask you to continue to watch over and uplift our military service personnel, citizens, first responders, health care providers, and educators. Provide them with your courage, strength, and energy. Lord, we pray these things and more in your most holy name, and thank you for the many blessings in our lives. Amen. Counsel, if I may, I'd like to take a minute to recognize Mr. Joe Casely. He has a brief statement he would like to make. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Vincenti, members of the council. I would like to address the council regarding my decision to withdraw my name for consideration for the Ethics Committee and explain this. When my brother was elected in the, after the primary, he and I had a lot of conversations about his desire for the kind of government he wanted, and he was very sure that he wanted to bring integrity as a key part and honesty as a key part of his administration. And after two years in the military and forty-one years of service to the Harford County Government as prosecutor, I wanted to continue to do something to help him. And in looking at the available boards and commissions, I thought that the Ethics Commission would be a good fit for me, that I could add something and still serve the county. After sitting through the council meeting last week and listening to some of the statements that were made during the public hearing, public comment section, I realized that there, it's very easy to make unsubstantiated claims regarding someone's motives and their principles. And I looked at the fact that if I were on the Ethics Commission, that I might be called upon to deal with a complaint regarding the county executive or some member of his team. And knowing that my brother's ethics, his courage in serving the citizens, I have to say honestly that I could not be impartial in dealing with such a complaint. My instinct would be to pull out my big rubber bull crap stamp, stamp it on there, and send it back. That would probably not be the best thing to do. And even if I were to do that, if that were the decision of the commission, it would not end there because there would always be those who claimed that the decision was made based on my presence on the Ethics Commission and that they would question my brother's reasoning and ethics for putting me on the commission or nominating me for the commission. So I think in the long run, in the interest of avoiding even the appearance of impropriety, I feel that it would be in the best for everyone involved if I withdrew my name from consideration. I thank this council. I know that you all took some time in reviewing that, and I hate to waste the time, but I think in the long run, it's the best thing for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casely, for asking for the time to give some explanation and background. We do appreciate that. We thank you for your service, not only for the country but to the county, as I said before. And with that, if I may, council members, anyone want to mention, say anything? Mr. Pemben.
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you for being here, Mr. Casely. I understand that there has been a lot of debate over your appointment to the Ethics Board, and I would like to discuss just a few of my thoughts. Having spent twelve years of my law enforcement career as a member of the Harford County Narcotics Task Force, I know firsthand the impact that you, Joe Casely, have made keeping our Harford County safe. During that time, myself and other members of the task force worked alongside you and your team of attorneys to handle complex investigations and wiretaps, during which you always remain professional, ethical, and honorable in all aspects. Joe Casely was the state's attorney for Harford County for thirty-six years. During that time, he was always tough on crime and a great partner to law enforcement. One of the reasons Harford County is still a safe place to live, work, and raise your families because of you, Joe Casely. It was common knowledge that drug dealers and criminals were reluctant to come to Harford County because they knew Joe Casely would hold criminals accountable for their actions. I want to thank you, Joe Casely, for your difficult decision to withdraw your name for consideration because of the potential of conflict of interest. Once again, you have earned my trust, respect, and admiration. I am confident that there will be an opportunity for you to serve with your experience and your talents for Harford County. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pemben. Anyone else? Mr. Riley.
Yes, I had the privilege of working with Mr. Casely in the courthouse for twenty years, and Joe, it was an absolute privilege. I know it was a difficult decision, and again, I appreciate all your service, not only to the country, to our county, and your difficult decision also. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Guthrie.
I do want to thank you for your service, having many family members who were in the different wars. My father-in-law was a World War II veteran, passed away about nine years ago, still had stratus when he from the war, and he had all kinds of medals. You're in that chair because you went to defend the citizens in this county and the ones in this room, protect America and the United States, and we appreciate your service. I know it impressed me when I was on the council for twelve years, from two thousand two to two thousand fourteen. We went to a lot of different events together, and it certainly impressed me that you could go there, be there, drive yourself, get out of the car, you got your wheelchair in the backseat, you pulled it out, you got in it, you went to the meetings that we all went to, came back, and did everything in reverse, and that just impressed me a lot. So I can't thank you enough for what you did for our country, and I remember when I was on the council, you stole my legislative aide. Be the assistant state's attorney for a number of years, and then she eventually wound up in Annapolis. But again, I can't thank you enough for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? Seeing no one else. Thank you, sir. Agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations, we have none. Five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations, executive appointments, local management board. Counsel, if there are no objections, I will move the following executive appointments together.
Mr. President.
Mr. Pemben.
I request that we separate one name from the local management board, appointees, Tracy Pemben, to remove any conflict of interest.
Thank you, then. We'll start with a motion to recognize Ms. Pemben. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Ms. Pemben. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pemben.
Abstain.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one abstention, the appointment is approved. And then, if I may, I'd like to have a motion for reappointments of Marcy Austin, Robert Basler, Savannah Bulker, Megan Cornet, Megan Deacon, Crystal de Jesus, Ross Di Eduardo, Melissa Feliciano, Cora Grishkot, I believe, Frank Kellner, Anna Marie Peretti, Laura Roggala, Mary Beth Stapleton, Robin Temecchio, Jenny Tyler, Laura Walker, and new appointments of Angela Gray, Allison Healy, Sharon Nolte, Suzanne Kovak, Jennifer Redding, and Barbara Richardson.
Make a motion.
Cough.
Counsel President.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the following appointments and reappointments just mentioned. Do you need me to read them again?
No, that's fine. I have it. Mr. Riley, I'll put you in as a second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the following appointments. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pemben.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby Deputy Directors, again, counsel, if there are no objections, we'll move the following executive appointments together. Mr. Jan Giordano.
Counsel President, I move to approve the following appointments. Michael Burnicki as Deputy Director of Emergency Services, Gregory Green as Deputy Director of Information and Communication Technology.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pemben, I believe. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Deputy Director appointments. Is there any discussion? I just want to recognize Mr. Brennicky for his years of service to the EOC, and also Mr. Green. I had the opportunity to meet him. I see him in the audience this evening, sir. It's a pleasure to be working with you in the future, if this vote goes the way we hope it does. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pemben.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Mr. Green, would you please stand and be recognized? Mr. Brennicky?
Thank you, gentlemen, and we do look forward to working with both of you.
Ethics Board, again, if there are no objections, counsel, we'll move the following executive appointments together.
Counsel President.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve D.S. Galloway, Deanne Sniggrass, Kurt Volkmickie, and Allison Whitcare.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointments to the Ethics Board. Any comments? Discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pemben.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Are any of the appointees here this evening? Very good. Thank you. Board of Estimates, new appointment, James Richardson, Citizen Representative. May I have a motion?
Counsel President, I move to approve James Richardson as Citizens Representative.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded to approve Mr. Richardson to the Board of Estimates. Is there any discussion? Again, if I may, Mr. Richardson, thanks for coming back.
Just in time.
He has a long history of working with the county over several years, and I know he will be an asset to the Board of Estimates. Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pemben.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointments hereby approved. Board of Education, Harford County, we've decided at the request of several to separate these and do them individually. So, Mr. Jan Giordano, may I have a motion, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve the appointment of Dr. Erin Pointon to the Harford County Board of Education for a two-year term to commence as provided by the education article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section three dash six A dash zero one, parentheses E.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Mr. Pointon. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jacob, I'm Mr. Bennett.
You've been hanging out with Mila too much.
I think so. I think so.
I just wanted to first thank all three, you know, we're only speaking to Dr. Pointon right now, but I just want to thank all three for meeting with me in the past week, you know, incredibly generous with their time, hours of conversation, you know, being willing to answer tough questions, being willing to listen and also provide me new perspective, you know, taking in, we've gotten hundreds of emails in the, and that's not exaggeration, it was hundreds, it felt like thousands. But as we vote tonight, there was one thing that was pointed out to me about the Maryland law that was passed last year that I just want to make sure I put into the record as we make our considerations, you know, Section three dash six A dash zero one, which is the law that was passed last year, requires in Section D subsection three dash two that in appointing members to the county board, the county executive shall ensure, to the extent that's practicable, that the total makeup of the county board reflects the gender, ethnic, and racial diversity of the county. You know, with the data that we have on the county, we know that Harford County is seventy-five percent white, non-Hispanic, but we also know that Harford County Public Schools' children population is currently fifty-nine point eight percent white, non-Hispanic. So with that being said, you know, with having three white appointees, that would put us, and not in reflection with the county makeup in that sense, but also from a gender perspective, only having one man put forth for appointment out of the three appointees makes it so that we'll only have twenty-two percent of the board be men, two members, when forty-nine percent of our population is men. So in that sense, you know, we're not following to the letter of the law what Section D subsection three dash two requires of us. And, you know, I find this especially pertinent considering our current county executive was part of the delegation that passed this law just last year, you know? So if we're gonna, you know, pass a law, we're gonna follow a law. And for that purpose, you know, it's nothing against any of the candidates that are being put forth tonight. Again, I thank them for their time, but with the purpose of fulfilling the law as written, I plan to vote abstention on each vote tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie.
You know, I'm having some of the same problem because of the law, I think all three of these are good appointees and do a great job for the Board of Education. But if I voted against any of these, it's only because one of these people appointed should be a person of color to abide by the law that was passed last year in Annapolis. So if I vote for any of these, against any of these, don't take it offense because it's just that I think we need one opening in here to have the county executive appoint someone of color.
Mr. Pemben.
Yes, I think there's one element of the statute that should be pointed out where it says, "to the extent practical." I don't know who all applied for the position or what the experiences of each of them were, so I think that's a decision that the county executive made, and that's why these three have been brought forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett.
I do think in response to that, it's worth pointing out that there were eighty-four people who put in their application and who met voter registration requirements. And I just find it doubtful that out of those eighty-four, there's not a single person of color that would be considered qualified, or, you know, a second man that would be considered qualified. And, you know, I just, I think, respond in disagreement to that stance that it wouldn't be practical to find one person of color out of eighty-four applicants who would be qualified.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, Colorado, and Mr. Pointon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
Mr. Pemben.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Abstain.
We have five votes in the affirmative, one negative, and one abstention, the appointment is hereby approved. Mr. Jan Giordano.
Counsel President, I move to approve the appointment of Teresa Kocher to the Harford County Board of Education for a two-year term to commence as provided by the education article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section three dash six A dash oh one, parentheses E.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Teresa Koher. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Abstain.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pemben.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Abstain.
There are five votes in the affirmative and two abstentions, the appointment is hereby Mr. Jan Giordano.
Counsel President, I move to approve the appointment of Lauren Strauss to the Harford County Board of Education for a two-year term to commence as provided by the education article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section three dash six A dash zero one, parentheses E.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Lauren Strauss. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pemben.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Abstain.
These six votes in the affirmative, one abstention, the appointment is hereby approved. Counsel will now act as the zoning board of appeals and return back to legislative session thereafter. Zoning appeal case number fifty-nine sixty-six. Mr. Pemben.
Mr. President, I move to approve the zoning hearing examiner's decision on zoning appeal case number five-nine-six-six.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's been moved and seconded to uphold the decision recommended by the zoning examiner. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pemben.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the decision to uphold the zoning examiner is approved. Zoning appeal case number fifty-nine seventy, Ms. Sodles.
Counsel President, I make a motion to uphold the zoning examiner's decision for zoning appeal case number five-nine-seven-oh.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pemben. It's been moved and seconded to uphold the decision recommended by the zoning examiner. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pemben.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the decision to uphold the zoning examiner is approved. Number six special presentations we have known, seven approval of minutes, State of the County and Legislative Address, February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, legislative day twenty-three dash zero zero four, February seven, two thousand twenty-three. Are there any corrections to the minutes? The minutes stand approved. Agenda number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Mr. Jan Giordano.
Resolution zero zero three dash twenty-three, historic landmark Fairview AME Church, a resolution designating the Fairview AME Church, Fairview School, and Turner Memorial Cemetery consisting of two point eight three four acres located at twenty-three, twenty-eight High Point Road in Forest Hill, Maryland, together with the buildings, environmental settings, and furnaces as a Harford County historic landmark in accordance with chapter two six seven of the Harford County Code.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. You want to come forward? Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Good evening, Council President Vincenti, members of the council. It's good to be back before you again. It's been some years, and lots of new members on the council, so I look forward to working with you all. But this evening, we have some good stuff we'd like to present to you. This evening, I also have Jacob Benson here with me tonight, and he is our Historic Preservation Planner, and he's doing a lot of great work in our office to look after some of the most important properties, cultural properties, cultural resources, and historic properties in our county. Tonight, we're pleased to present to you Resolution zero zero three dash twenty-three for a Harford County landmark designation for the Fairview AME Church, Fairview School, and the Turner Memorial Cemetery. And with us, we have some representatives from the church tonight as well. So just a little background for some of the newer members on what we do with historic preservation. A Harford County historic landmark or district designation is a local protection of a historic site or cultural resource, and historic landmarks and districts are protected from demolition and any unnecessary changes or alterations, significant alterations, and they're generally reviewed by our Historic Preservation Commission for their appropriateness for any changes that would be made. And so the Historic Preservation Commission looks at a certificate of appropriateness and makes sure that it's in compliance with our rules and regulations for that site, and they vote on that. And then the owners of those designated properties are also eligible for county tax credits to help with the rehabilitation and maintenance of their properties and with those expenses. There are currently sixty-eight properties in the county that are designated as individual landmarks, and we also have one historic district, and that's the Joppa Historic District. The designation of Harford County historic landmarks and districts preserves and enhances the quality of life in Harford County by safeguarding the county's diverse historic and cultural heritage, strengthening the economy, and creating jobs, stabilizing and improving property values, fostering pride in our community, and giving us an opportunity to learn from the accomplishments and mistakes of those that came before us. This process for designating a county landmark or district begins when a property owner or other citizen submits a nomination form detailing the cultural or architectural significance of the property in question. For individual landmarks, the property owner must give consent, and for districts, the owners of seventy-five percent or more of the lots or parcels within that district must also agree to the designation of a historic district in order to move that forward. A public meeting is then held, allowing the Preservation Commission to review the application, receive public comment on the nomination, and ask questions of the owner and the applicant. The Commission then holds a vote on whether to recommend the landmark designation for the property, and the final step is then to bring that resolution in front of you all, such as the Fairview AME Church, which we're bringing in front of you this evening, the Fairview School, and the Turner Memorial Cemetery. This property nominated for designation is located at twenty-three, twenty-eight High Point Road in Forest Hill, and from a personal perspective, I drive past this property every day, I probably have for the last twenty-five years, and I've always wondered about this property as it's very unique and certainly is an old church with a very old cemetery. And this nomination was submitted by the property owner, Fairview AME Church. It is identified in the Maryland Inventory of Historic Places also as HA twenty-two ninety-three, and if you were so interested, you could look that up on the web and see that historic designation and all the information that accompanies it. The proposed landmark consists of three contributing resources, like you said, the church, which was built between nineteen oh nine and nineteen eleven, and I believe, Jacob, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's been a church on the site even prior to that, correct? So this church replaced a previous church on the site, and there's a long history at this location. Again, the Fairview School, that was built around nineteen twenty-seven and used as the church's parsonage since nineteen forty-five. And the Turner Memorial Cemetery, whose earliest recorded burial is in eighteen eighty-four. The property is significant for its association with the lives of persons important to our history, such as Miss Mary Bond Berry, an educator who worked to transition the segregated central consolidated school into integrated Hickory Elementary School, as well as the Reverend Akilah Green, who in addition to his religious service, was a successful entrepreneur and founder of Coop Town's Greens Garage. And if you haven't been in Coop Town, it's a very little, small place on the dot, but it does have a lot of significance in our county history. As a center for worship, community, and education, the property served and continues As a center for worship, community, and education, the property served and continues to serve a vital role in the lives of African-American Harford Countyans, and so embodies character, interest, or value as a part of the heritage or culture of Harford County. The property has the potential to yield significant information about the lives of individuals who lived, worshipped, were educated, and are buried there, increasing our collective knowledge of the history of Harford County and its people. At their December 7, 2022, public meeting, the Historic Preservation Commission recommended the property for designation as a Harford County historic landmark. Mr. Benson and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we are pleased to present this nomination to you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Did you mention the acreage? I didn't catch that. If you did.
No, I didn't mention the acreage.
2.834.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It's 2.834 acres as shown on the resolution.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Janjordano.
Good evening, Mr. Grimm. Does that allow them, if they want to build a building on it afterwards, that they can build a building anywhere on their property even though it goes in preservation?
If it goes on the property, they would still probably bring that in front of the Historic Preservation Commission to see if it has any impact to those contributing structures or areas that are designated on the property.
So they have to get approval, they would have to get approval from Historic Preservation to build or add on to the church or something like that?
Correct. So the way that would work is they would first come to Jacob and present to them or present to him what they would like to do, and then we would advise them moving forward. They would then take that to the Historic Preservation Commission to say, hey, we would like to do this, we would like to add an addition on, and then the Historic Preservation Commission would look at that, make sure it's appropriate, and then they would issue the certificate of appropriateness. In this case, there are some aesthetic improvements that they're going for now. I think there are some downspouts and things like that that they're looking for. Siding, roofing, and things like that.
Okay. Has anybody asked them if they plan on doing any kind of expansion or anything and put that in a plan? I'd hate to see it all go move forward, and five years down the road, they had an idea to add something or build something, and they didn't talk to you guys about that, and they've got to go through a lot of rigmarole to get it built.
There was no mention of any additions or new construction planned. The applicant is the church themselves, so we trusted that any plans that they have been thinking of, they would have let us know of at that time.
Can we make sure that's the case before we vote, and can we ask them somehow or another?
There are representatives here this evening.
Okay. Is that possible, that we can hear from them, just to make sure?
If they're willing to recognize or be recognized, absolutely. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Jean Grover. I'm a member of the Fairview AME Church. We have no plans on building or making any alterations to any of the buildings that are there, other than general maintenance like roofing, repair, and, you know, plumbing and such.
I just wanted to make sure that moving forward, that in case there was something on a plan five years down the road that somebody didn't mention, it's not a hardship for you guys to go and build something and have to get all these approvals. I'd like for, if you did have something, that we knew about it now. So that was my, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grover. Council, anyone else have any questions, and Mr. Grimm? Mr. Benson, any questions, Anne? Thank you, gentlemen. We'll take this up in a future meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Introduction to bills, Bill 23-004. Mr. Janjordano.
Bill 23-004, Police Accountability Board Amendments, an act to repeal and reenact with amendment section 9, 136, Establishment, Membership, and section 9-137, Meetings, Budget, and Records of Article 22, Harford County Police Accountability Board of Part Three, Authoritative Boards and Commissions of Chapter Nine, Boards, Commissions, Councils, and Agencies of the Harford County Code as amended to provide that the county council shall appoint the membership and the chair, establish the budget and the staff for the board, and generally relating to the Police Accountability Board. Public hearing scheduled March 14, 2023, 6:00 p.m. in these council chambers.
Thank you. Bill 23-005.
23-005, Moratorium Warehouse, an emergency act to create a six-month moratorium on the issuance of any approvals or permits for any development of any warehousing and wholesaling, processing, distribution, and local delivery facilities on properties owned Village Business District, VB, General Business District, B3, Commercial Industrial District, CI, Light Industrial District, LI, and General Industrial District, GI, in Harford County, so that the Harford County government can study and reconsider its zoning and development regulations with respect to such facilities. Public hearing scheduled March 14, 2023, 6:00 p.m. in these council chambers.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, introduction and consideration amendments, we have none in 11. Call for final reading of bills, we have none. 12, enrollment of bills, we have none. 13, unfinished business, we have none. 14, new business, we have none. Agenda item number 17, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have a number on speaker?
We do, Mr. President, and I am waiting on the box to see if we have any other additions.
While we're waiting on our final numbers, I want to make an announcement. As far as pending legislation tonight that was introduced, there will be no leeway for any comment on both Bill 23-004 and 23-005. In the past, I know that our citizens have creative ways to stand up and speak, but we're going to be firm tonight. Please be respectful and understand why. So, and just give us a minute.
We have 14 this evening, Mr. President.
Then again, as I said earlier, be mindful of your comments, respectful of your time and each other. Call your first speaker.
Brendan Patton, followed by Janine Lacour.
Brendan Patton, 2054, Park Beach Drive. Mr. Vincenti, I was happy to hear you speak last week about part of the job of this body is to check on the executive branch, and we've been here for a year asking you to do that, so please consider that when you move forward. I was also happy to hear you talk about Woodley Road, but I think we all understand that the Woodley Road extension might help with the problems down there, but it's not going to permit further expansion of the facilities that are already down there. It still doesn't solve the problem of developing the Mitchell project.
Mr. Patton, I'm serious about not trying to extend. I don't want to hear anything about that project tonight.
Okay.
And I agree with your earlier comment about checks and balances, 100%, and I understand your concern about Woodley Road.
Okay.
But please be mindful of what I asked earlier.
That's fine. What I didn't understand is when you said we couldn't speak about those projects, and you, I guess, we understand why. I don't understand, so can you explain?
It's always been the council rule that any pending legislation cannot be discussed the night of introduction. It'll have to wait till public hearing.
Okay. I mean, to me, that just, it...
It is what it is, Mr. Patton.
Is there a rule written somewhere?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll contact your office and get a copy of that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilman Guthrie, thank you last week for pointing out the NRD bump up in the zoning code. I was actually not even aware that was a thing, so I went and looked it up, and it's crazy to me that the NRD is a natural resource district, so you can't develop in the natural resource district. But if you have property that has some natural resource district in it, then you can upzone the remaining property. So we're going to preserve this part, but we're going to more intensely develop this part. That doesn't make any sense at all. So I appreciate you, any efforts that you can...
Bill's coming.
Thank you, sir. I had some comments for Mr. Pennman, but I guess I'm not allowed to talk about that. So?
Thank you, sir. Hey, Pat, is that mic on? Huh? Is that mic on?
No.
Yeah. There you go. I knew it wasn't on. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Janine Lacour, 1820, Park Beach Drive. I did want to just comment about the earlier presentation about the historic landmark of Fairview AME, and definitely recommend supporting that. And it, timely, everything happens at a perfect time and perfect reason. I also had the opportunity to listen to the presentation by Patricia Cole of the history of the Haverty Grace Colored School. She did an excellent presentation, just commenting about the focus, not only on the school, but the people and the legacies, which certainly impacted many generations. And likewise, everything we're doing here today, yesterday, tomorrow, is impacting future generations. We know that there were enslaved people all throughout Harford County, in particularly through the agricultural areas in the Perryman Peninsula, and yet in our zoning codes, there's no requirement for any kind of architectural survey, and more importantly, there's nothing that requires any kind of archaeological survey. There are historical surveys that have been done, and they clearly designate that remnants have been found, but yet the properties have been allowed to develop, and we've lost that historical information. Likewise, with the historic landmark of Fairview AME and all the properties that were designated, earlier our presenters said that there are 68 landmarks throughout Harford County. There's only two that are designated in the Perryman Peninsula, even though we know there are well more. There are actually probably tens of twenties, thirties, forties, applications that have been submitted, yet there's only two within that area. So, and I do want to point out that actually right on Spazoucha Road, which is a very heavily trafficked road by vehicles that shouldn't be on that road, there is the Refuge Temple Ministries, which was actually one of the original colored schools in the Perryman Peninsula. And again, that's another area, another school that we would do well to do a lot of research and understand what was happening and how the, our African-American people were separately treated and received lesser. And again, we're still dealing with that legacy today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Greg Lacour, followed by Henry Gibbons.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Greg Lacour, 1820, Park Beach Drive. I'm going to address this, and if I get out of line, hit me with it, okay? A lot of changes that go on from different years with the council. Last year, with the council, citizens were able to speak last. Still listed in the program agenda, last, but for some reason, it has been moved up. My speculation is that the gentleman that sat in council seat, you know, F, said something to the fact that he was very upset with us, and he had to have his dessert first before eating his dinner.
Hmm.
Okay?
Mr. Lacour, let me assure you that the decision on anything on this agenda comes from me.
Very good. So to my point, I have no problem with the change.
Thank you.
You all get to speak last, that's fine. But we had to wait a week to address somebody on this council, and now that the moratorium's been put up there, we can't talk about it.
No, sir.
Last week, we had a lot of people here that got onto my councilperson that he's with the Board of Education, and he should recuse himself from any vote on the Board of Education. Whether he listened to you or not, abstained three times. There might be somebody on this council that said that they're not a lawyer, but boy, oh boy, did they read something that looked like it was written from a lawyer that represented him and represents somebody that we're interested in. Will this councilman recuse himself? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Henry Gibbons, 2402 Papaya Road, Edgewood. I want to say good evening and Happy Valentine's Day, and I want to thank you all for providing the opportunity for me to address this body. Tonight, you've chosen to confirm three appointments to perhaps one of the most influential body over the affairs of Harford County citizens, and by far the most important body that has influence over the children of Harford County. To the appointees, to the school, to the Board of Education, I congratulate you and remind you of the trust that we as citizens in the county place in you as stewards of the schools and of all of our children. I hope that we'll be happy with this choice, and I hope that our impressions from the research we've done on the prior positions and affiliations of some of these individuals don't manifest themselves in the policies of the schools. Indeed, I really do hope that I have to eat my words and that my initial assessment was wrong. And I'll echo other comments that you'll hear tonight and remind you that your victories in your respective primary elections reflected a broader opposition and distaste for some of the most radical candidates in your parties. You beat them because of more moderate voices in your own party. But I also want to turn to a topic that's concerned me more with every passing meeting I attend, whether it's here or at the Board of Ed, and that is the escalating language that I've heard spoken at these meetings, and I want to point out that every single person in this room is concerned about the welfare of our children on both sides of the political divide. No one wants children to come to harm. No one wants children prematurely sexualized, to be deprived of the innocent of childhood, or some of the other nonsense that I've heard. No one wants any of these things, and I'm in that camp. But we've heard that our school systems, and by extension, our teachers, are indoctrinating our kids with a stew of pejorative terms that imply that they're turning them into little red book-waving champions of Marxist ideology, or that they're preparing our kids for exploitation in some ways, and all sorts of other things that, quite frankly, most of our education workforce would be very surprised to learn that they had the time to do amidst their packed classroom schedules and much less orchestrate something county-wide during their limited planning periods. But beyond the factual inaccuracy, the use of these kinds of pejorative terms, they capture the headlines, sure, and they make great theatrics on video, but it's actually quite dangerous. This rhetoric, whether employed by right or left, this kind, it demonizes and dehumanizes groups of individuals and predisposes them to harm from some less stable adherence to whichever ideology happens to be spewing that kind of infective. And finally, it really does nothing to advance the interests of our children. So I call on everyone in this room, and you can hold me to this too, to tamp down the rhetoric, tamp down the inaccuracies, and let's confine ourselves to actually speaking truth about what's going on in our school systems. That way, we can actually solve problems together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons.
Monica McHale, followed by John Malamal.
May I have a name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Monica McHale. I reside at 2103 Wyndham Court, Bel Air, Maryland 21015. Greetings, Council President, Councilmen, Councilwoman, and fellow community members. I have been a resident of Harford County my entire life of nearly 40 years. I'm very concerned about the development of Harford County, especially in the past year, as many projects have resumed status post-COVID restrictions being lifted. My major concern is the impact that we are having on our environment, wildlife, deer, foxes, raccoons, birds, small mammals, due to changes in their natural habitats. There are, there is a project that I'm deeply concerned about, which is the approximate 34 acres of the former lands of Caddy Farms located between Route 24 and Route 924 along Plum Tree Road. According to our county code, the forest conservation plan approval must be made by the Director of Planning and Zoning. The FCP for Caddy Farms was not made by the Director of Zoning and Planning. It was made by the Chief of Developmental Review of the County's Department of Zoning and Planning. And only developmental decisions of the Director of Planning are final decisions that can be appealed pursuant to a petition for judicial review as per Harford County Code 268-28. The former Director of Zoning and Planning was Ms. Jenny Jarkowski. The current Director of Zoning and Planning is Mr. Shane P. Grimm. As one major project was found to have issues with permits, it begs the question how many other permits may be concerned to be valid or invalid. other permits may be concerned to be valid or invalid. For Caddy Farms, FCP, or the Forest Conservation Plan, a waiver was approved for the removal of 38 specimen trees. As per Harford County Code 26739D, only the Director of Zoning and Planning is authorized to grant this waiver, and this was not done. The Director of Zoning and Planning determines whether to grant the waiver based off of six determinations. So I'm calling for a review of the FC permits on current projects within our county, and until they're reviewed to possibly even revoke them according to our county laws, because the approval for the FCP was incorrectly obtained. Please review the county's forest conservation plan permits on all current projects before allowing the development or grading to be authorized to resume and continue. Harford County is losing vast wildlife with each new development. Animals are being displaced from their homes and forced to go elsewhere, often becoming injured by vehicles or tragically becoming roadkill. Please be a voice for the voiceless. I know that growth is inevitable, but it needs to be carefully done and controlled. Permits need to be issued with validity. Please protect our communities and wildlife from overdevelopment. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagle View Drive. A little background. Reviewing operations at Harford County Airport, we start by looking at the airport layout plan. You have the earliest and latest version. What do we notice about the drawings provided? The earliest airport layout plan is dated June 2012, signed by President of Airport Owners Group, 15 March 2013, and the Maryland Aviation Administration, 25 March 2013. Bill 13-4, as amended, zoning code revisions, airport was approved 7 March 2013. The airport layout plan was constructed nine months before legislation allowing airports in the Ag District, approved 16 months before the special exception was requested, and 27 months before the special exception was granted. The plan is a complete description of the land upon which the commercial operation is located. It includes all buildings, pavement areas, airport approach and landing paths, aircraft parking and storage areas, and only one runway, 0119. The current version also includes accessory uses. Focusing on the planned area marked Approach Surface, total calculated area is 258 acres. That is only one leg of the approach and landing paths. As noted in the FAA interpretation, landing, the process of coming to land, begins when the airplane descends below the minimum safe operating or traffic pattern altitude. This process can only occur in the traffic pattern. The horizontal surface on the plan approximates the traffic pattern and is approximately 2,800 acres. As described in the FAA Airplane Flying Handbook, the point at which the airplane begins landing is a beam or across from the downwind leg of the approach end of the runway. And one mile off-center, descent is gradual, usually on a 21, 20 to 1 slope, 20 feet over ground for every one foot of altitude, as noted in the legend of the plan. The airplane proceeds on the downwind leg approximately one leg beyond the end of the runway, turns left 90 degrees, crosswind to the base leg, proceeding approximately one mile there, turning 90 degrees left to the final leg, marked Approach Surface, and begins final approach. The FAA legal interpretation recognizes there are no meets and bounds for the traffic pattern. The planned legend shows the airplane one mile off the centerline. It could be a half a mile, or 3/4 of a mile, or wherever the pilot determines. The entire enclosed area is therefore reserved for the approach and landing path. Using one mile as the furthest-most boundary, total calculated area of the approach and landing path is 1,409 acres, all in the Ag District. Code requirement specifies no more than 50% of the commercial operation, including the approach and landing paths, may be in the Ag District. The airport must then have at least 1,409 acres in the CIGI or LI District, which is approximately eight times more than 172 total acres of the Harford County Airport. The operation described in the airport layout plan does not and cannot meet zoning code requirements. Good night.
Good night, sir.
Cassandra Beverly, followed by Susie Scott.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Council President Vicente and members of the council. My name is Cassandra Beverly, and I'm the Chair of the Harford County Caucus of African-American Leaders. My address is 137 Alice Anne Street, Bel Air, Maryland. As we have focused our attention this month on Black History, I have been asking people to look beyond the few people whose names are usually mentioned during the month. However, tonight, I want to pay tribute to Frederick Augustus Washington Bailey, who was born into slavery and never knew his birthdate. He learned to read by bribing young white boys with food to teach him to read. He developed a love for learning, taught other enslaved persons to read, and operated a forbidden Sunday School. He became a famous orator, author, and abolitionist, who was much admired by President Lincoln. He adopted February the 14th as his birthday, because his last memory of his mother was on a day when she had baked a heart-shaped cake for him. He also adopted a new name, Frederick Douglas. Education is a powerful tool for lifting people out of poverty. It is the reason that I and others are so concerned about our school system becoming a political weapon for the benefit of some, but to the detriment of our children. I, I don't have a problem with legitimate criticism of the system. I myself am often a vocal opponent of the school system. I do, however, have an issue with made-up, nonexistent problems being used to advance a political agenda. As soon as you hear certain catchphrases, you know it's about politics and not about students. Parents look closely at the local school system when deciding where to purchase their homes. It is in all of our interests to maintain and improve our county's school system. It will not be improved by banning books and refusing to teach our entire history. This will take courage. We know it's easier to go along to get along. Our students need you to put up, put their interests above your own. There is a great man or woman in our school system right now, perhaps among the voices of equity, who need you to stand up for them. Thank you very much, and Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Susie Scott. I'd like, I live at 314 Street Circle. Just want to say thank you very much for the appointments to the school board. We're looking forward to their being sworn in and serving on the board. I think that they will bring balance to this board that has been missing, and I just, just want to say thank you to Councilman, or to, to County Executive Castle, and to, to you for interviewing them and, and approving them tonight. So, thank you very much. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stephanie McCoyne, followed by Lee Maddox.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Mr. Council President, members of the council, I would like to start tonight with a compliment, and that is to Mr. Pennman for your proposed chicken bill in the future. I think that in this time of turmoil, where we have been hearing hateful rhetoric more and more, there are certain things that we all can come together on. Those things in Harford County explicitly include the environment and our precious natural resources, and the fact that chickens in a rural county are remarkably hard to have. The fact that in Aberdeen and Havvy Grace, my friends who live in a development can have chickens with no problem, whereas my neighbor in Darlington can't, because they're not zoned Ag. Baltimore County just last year changed their rules regarding chickens, and I was going to pester you all about it individually in the near future, so I'm very glad to hear that's something. If anyone would like to have a tour of my chickens and the swings that they have in their coops, you're more than welcome. Along those lines, I think, as funny as chickens may seem, with the rise in egg costs, with all the TikToks we're seeing about that, the conspiracy theories on social media, that's something simple, that's something actionable, and that's something that can help your constituents. So many of the things that we argue back and forth about, they're not easy fixes. We're not all going to see eye to eye. There's going to be times of turmoil, and there's nothing that can get done to actually help the people. My mechanic and I had a conversation two days ago, it was about potentially running for office in the future, and he said, Stephanie, do you want to do good, or do you want to be a politician? You all have the chance to do both. You all have more power than anyone else in the county to do things that may help someone you don't agree with politically, but helps people overall. And as silly as it may be, allowing your constituents to have eggs in their backyard is an easy way to make friends and help people. With that said in mind, helping people does not necessarily mean being a rubber stamp to the county executive. While I respect him very much, I don't agree with everything he has to say, and neither will you. It's very important to look critically. I thank Mr. Bennett and Mr. Guthrie for your critical eye at the school board bill. Critical eyes prevent lawsuits, and lawsuits prevent our money from being wasted. So, whenever there are appointments, I encourage you to take a look at the will of the voters. As mentioned earlier, several of you have very hard-fought primaries. You did not win a primary because the extremists supported you. The person who brought a rhino hunting float to my precious hometown parade did not win. The voters respected you enough and thought that you would do good in the county and elected you. They did the same with BOE, and tonight's vote unfortunately flip-flopped the will of people. I think as we move forward, I respect and admire the fact that you all ran and are up here, and I really just encourage you to not just think about your donors, or who helped put you in office, but to think about how you can help the people, because you have a rare opportunity to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. Lee Maddox, 1700 Church Point Court, Perryman. So, good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. It's very good to see you all tonight. For the past year, my community in Perryman, on many different fronts, has been desperately asking the county for help. We are starting to see some indications that help is on the horizon, and we appreciate that hope. As you work to help us, always with integrity, I encourage you to include the community in the conversation. In my decades spent working to help and support our communities, in their times of need, I always saw better results when communities were included. It might seem easier or more efficient to act without community input, but it is rarely the best way to proceed. Please work with us. Include us. We will all be stronger and more ethical together. And I'll close with a quote from Thomas Jefferson, "The government closest to the people serves the people best." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kate McDonald, followed by William Graham.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Kate McDonald, 2100 Park Beach Drive. Tonight, I would like to first address Mr. Bennett. I was not able to stay for the entire hearing this morning, but you have my full support in whatever happens tomorrow. You have our gratitude for your honest and professional leadership so far. I know, given your character as a person, that you would never take money from developers, their attorneys, and other interests, and then get up there on the dais and publicly extend their agenda at the expense of residents in your district or any other district in this county. I truly believe you're nobody's puppet, and that's why I voted for you. Mr. Pennman, in one of your first meetings, you spoke about the outrage of your constituents, that there were so many dump trucks going up and down Mountain Road. You remember that? Imagine if they had to deal with the constant barrage of truck, diesel truck traffic clogging their paths to and from their homes all day, all night, every day. But don't worry, because there are no such developments in North Harford County, or in the vast open spaces of Fallston, or along Mountain Road, so they and you will never have to deal with these issues. Even, even though from I-95 to the Mountain Road Bel Air intersection, it's only a 4.9-mile drive, or 10-minute drive, with three lights, no turns. To get from I-95 and Mountain Road to the distribution center down in Perryman, it's a 13-mile, 21-minute, 11 lights, and intersections, and five turns. Nobody's buying the claim that my area was picked because of its proximity to the I-95 corridor. Perryman was picked because they didn't want this type of development north of I-95. They thought we would not put up a fight. Even Baltimore and Cecil County have carefully planned the placement of their freight distribution centers so that the building, okay, they're big
Ma'am.
Structures. Okay, so that they're not backing up or facing homes, diesels are not traversing the same small roads with houses on them and kids wanting, waiting for the bus, and driving through the neighborhoods spewing their dangerous and toxic pollution for everyone in the neighborhood to breathe. They didn't target the most impoverished and underserved area of the county and begin to systematically and illegally dump these dangerous, destructive, and deadly projects on the residents. Not everyone gets a second chance to right a wrong and change the course of someone's life, or in this case, the lives of many. Maybe it's time now to take a pause to determine if we should continue to allow Baltimore developers to destroy our communities in open spaces for a struggling industry with high employment turnover. Currently, we have several million square feet of vacant, large structures, sitting in South Harford County, blighting our area, and blighting the Route 44
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need.
Your time is up.
William Grant.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Will Graham, 2600 Cool Spring Road, Bel Air. I'm here tonight to speak about the state of our natural environment at large, and specifically about the proposed warehouse developments of Avenue of Woods.
Sir, you can't speak to that tonight.
I'm speaking about the bill. I'm just speaking about
You can't even mention it tonight, sir.
Can't mention
No, sir.
Okay. Well, it's hard to understand, especially knowing what we do about how we are destroying our environment, that anyone could think about wiping out 320 acres of mature woods. Less than a mile from Outer Point Creek, over top of the Ha Ha Branch that empties directly into Outer Point Creek, or to destroy the land directly on the banks of the Bush The Chesapeake Bay Foundation 2022 State of the Bay Report, produced through years of scientific research and studies, has given the health of the Chesapeake Bay this year a score of 32. That's a D+. This is the same score that was given in the 2020 report, meaning that the bay has not gotten any cleaner or healthier in the last two years. One of the determinations of this report is that the Chesapeake Bay blue crab population is currently the lowest that it's been in the 33-year history of this survey, right now. This report states the following. Runoff from developed lands is now Maryland's second-largest pollution source, surpassing wastewater. New construction and lagging efforts to reduce pollution in established neighborhoods means that this pollution source could further increase. Proposed permit renewals for local stormwater systems, construction activity, and industrial sites are insufficient to protect and restore water quality. This is just one indicator of what we're doing to our environment. There are many others that I would be happy to discuss, but not tonight. There are alternatives to these projects that could benefit the citizens of Harford County and the environment as well. We need to explore these alternatives. Harford County could be a leader in environmental justice and a model, a model for other locales to emulate. I believe our elected officials need to seriously consider their responsibilities to Harford County and what they want their legacy to be.
Thank you, sir.
Barbara Osborne Kramer, followed by Laurie Caldwell.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Osborne Kramer. I live in Aberdeen, and this is my street address, and I also signed it in the book. I appreciate that the Councilman from District F put a lot of extra time into of I appreciate that the councilman from District F put a lot of extra time into examining the candidates for Board of Education, and I hope the rest of you did as well. It doesn't have to be over, because the five of you who voted on the prevailing side, any of you could move and second to reconsider the vote next week. So if you didn't put the kind of effort in to inquire about what the nature of these nominees were, then you can still do so before you meet next week. To the gentlemen from District F, I hope things went well for you in court this morning. There were a lot of people who are rooting for you, a lot of people who voted for you, a lot of people who worked hard for you to get up here, a lot of people who care about you keeping both this office and your job. And they didn't send you up here to abstain. I have not heard you abstain before, and I would respectfully suggest that if you can't vote yes, you can either ask to hold it over, which the council usually honors that request for at least once, and then try to convince your fellow council members to vote the same way that you want to vote, or you can vote no. We certainly would anticipate there'd be a lot of divided votes, because this council is divided in some ways. So I hope that we will not be working so hard for you to be able to be in that seat and then refrain from voting. So the Board of Education is supposed to reflect community standards. That's why it's a lay board. So it's not of concern to me that they may not have backgrounds professionally as educators. What they are bringing is the overview of what the community cares about, what the community values are. And when the gentleman from District F was bringing up the lack of diversity on the basis of race and sex, I thought his next point was going to be a lack of diversity on values. And that wasn't brought up. But we know that the very conservative point of view is already represented strongly on the Board of Education. So to appoint three more people that do not bring diversity of points of view and values, then this Board of Education is not going to reflect the community's standards of all of Harford County. So please reconsider next week. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, Laurie Caldwell, 4206 Grayston Road. I wasn't going to come tonight because I figured anything I would say is going to be moot, and I don't do well by doing it on the fly, so I apologize. But I decided to come because I hope there might be a slim chance that you wouldn't rubber stamp the politically motivated Board of Ed appointments, Board of Ed appointments. And I wanted to be here, just in case, so that I could say thank you for striving to have some kind of balance. But I was wrong, so I came to say that my children grew up in this county, and their friends grew up in this county, and they're glad to be gone, all of them. And they're embarrassed to be from here, which makes me very sad. So I hope we all live long enough that what many of us in this room know was the intent. Maybe it just won't happen, but if it does, I hope we all live long enough. I hope you live long enough to regret it, and I hope I live long enough to, one day, finally get out of here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Agenda Number 16, business from council members. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to be great. I told me about I took too much time last week. Microphone on. Just a few things. Saturday, I was invited to a town hall meeting in Jerichoville Library, since I'm the liaison from the council to the Board of Education, to go over a town hall meeting with some of the Board of Education people, along with the people in the area. I'm glad Councilman Aaron Pennman joined me there at that meeting. We were sitting at the head table along with the Board of Education people, and it was very interesting to me. A lot of good dialogue went back and forth. I learned a few things, and also attending the Board of Education meeting last night, again, as the council liaison, and Mr. Pennman was there, and also Mr. Bennett was also there. So there's a lot of activity between these councils, some of these council members, and the Board of Education. One thing I've learned from both of them is there is a larger problem in the school systems with the mental ability of a lot of our students, and that's concerning a lot of people, and I'm really sorry to hear that. You know, all my children, my four children, all graduated from all the schools and graduated from Chappahtown High School. And I guess, I don't know if things are getting better, but it's really disheartening to hear that there's so much mental problems with our students in the schools. Of course, I'm going to continue to attend these meetings and hope I see some improvement in areas. Last Friday, I attended the American Legion Hall to give blood. There was a blood donation going on there at Post 17 on Edgewood Road, and I encouraged a lot of people to come. I think they made their 100. They were trying to get 100 pints of blood, and I think they got there, because after I gave blood and left, they were about 60, and they still had all afternoon and early evening, because they were there until 6:00. So I think they made their quota. Also, as being on board, I received a packet from the Board of Education as the liaison, and I provided copies to everybody on the council. And I was looking at the revenue of funds and what's the proposed budget, and I just thought I'd share it with you. I mean, this is just a preliminary start in the whole budget process, but this is just the schools. It doesn't have to do with this side of the street. But the budget for 2023 was $579,392,060. I don't know where the 60 bucks went, but the proposed budget for this year is $630,904,358. That's an increase of $51,512,298. Now, that's broken down, of course, that's not all the Harford County money. Okay, so we break it out. Of course, it's still your taxes, whether they come from here or come from the state to our taxes. The local, which is Harford County, is $19,673,880. And the state provides $32,273,704,180. And it's all broke down in this whole program. So that's the kickoff, and I'm sure that the Board of Education and the new people appointed, you're going to get that, and you're going to get a whole bunch of more pages that are going to have a whole lot of line items that you're going to have to deal with. I want to let everybody know, probably, Mr. Bennett is probably going to talk about this, but since it's in my district, I'll mention it, and he's going to be there because this pertains to his district. All you Perryman people, there's a Perryman Community Town Hall meeting going to be held on February 28, Tuesday, at 6:30 PM. That's next Tuesday. It's going to be held at the Harford County Sheriff's Office in the Southern Precinct and right on Route 40. And they're going to talk about, it says, topics of town halls, traffic, and safety, and focus on the existing traffic and safety issues stemming from the freight distribution centers currently in Perryman. So that's next Tuesday at 6:00.
Twenty-eight, two weeks.
I'm sorry, 28, the two weeks, and it will be at 6:00 at the Sheriff's Department. Also, there's another public hearing that's going to take place on this I-95 express toll with White Marsh. On February 27, there's going to be a public hearing at Perry Hall High School in Nottingham, but the other one we're interested in is that, the second one is going to be held March 6 at the Chappahtown High School, starting at 5:30 PM, to talk about that whole exchange. And there's a picture of it. Its artist's conception is unbelievable. Anyway, and in closing, Mr. President, I wish everybody a Happy Valentine's Day. I want to give you a little story about a couple of friends of ours. Me and my wife, we had a couple. It's a friend of ours. One, and this is part of it, one is retired airline pilot, and his wife is a retired stewardess. So I could figure they got to have a halfway decent pension. And they tell us what they do whenever there's Valentine's Day, or Christmas, or New Year's, or birthdays, or anything like that. They go, and this is a true story, you ain't going to believe it, but it's a true story. They go into a card store, and they go up to the cards, and she pulls out the card that she wants to give him, and he pulls out the card, wants to give her. They switch cards, they read them, and they say, "Thank you very much," and he put them back, and they leave the store. True story. Happy Valentine's Day.
Mr. Pennman, can you top that?
I don't think I could top that. I just have one thing to comment on this evening. I want to commend the Harford County Sheriff's Office for their actions and safe conclusion of the fugitive apprehension during the barricade situation in Fallston. I understand Baltimore County was extremely thankful for the Harford County resources and help during the manhunt and capture. Thankfully, the standoff here in Harford County ended safely. Unfortunately, in Baltimore County, two officers were shot. My thoughts and prayers go out to the Baltimore County Police Department, their community, and those officers that were injured. This is an unfortunate reminder that if you don't invest in public safety, law enforcement will quickly become unprepared to handle critical incidents. There was a time when Baltimore County Police Department was a national model for special responses, but after defunding movement in a county that doesn't support law enforcement, they have quickly become ill-prepared for critical incidents. Once again, I want to convey the importance of continuing to invest in the Harford County law enforcement and public safety. Thankfully, in the past, it has been a priority which has allowed the Harford County Sheriff's Office to be well-trained with equipment needed, such as the night vision and less lethal options that were used the other evening that was crucial, again, for the woodland deployment last Friday morning. This incident is another example of why the Harford County Sheriff's Office should continue to be a funding priority, to add resources, to keep up with the growing population trends, such as the previously approved and the funded Central Precinct and the State of the Art Training Center, to maintain public safety and the standard that Harford County deserves. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman and Mr. Jan Jardana. Ma'am, no applauding, please.
Thank you, Council President. Hopefully, I'll top Deion. But I'd also like to thank Harford County Sheriff's Office and all the deputies that responded to that. I also like to thank Rick Ayers from EMS. I know that they worked well together. I heard somebody talk about it in the meeting the other day, that they were grateful and that they worked well together. So on top of that, I know we actually got a piece of equipment from the Delaware State Police. I think it was called a Rook. So I want to thank the Delaware State Police. Piece of equipment, it looks like a fortified Bobcat that was able to go in and help, and I think ultimately that they were able to capture the person, and there was no loss of lives. So we appreciate all the hard work on that. On a lighter note, Harford County celebrated Fed Brewery. One of the places was Double Grove. If you go to any brewery in Harford County, there is one beer that they're all brewing that's going to taste a little bit different, but they're all doing that. It's the Libations Trail, so if people are out and they want to visit the breweries, there is a bunch of them that have that. So good luck. That was part of Visit Harford. I did attend the grand opening of M&amp;T Bank right across from Looney's in Bel Air. They totally redid the bank where it was an old, stuffy bank. It is just absolutely beautiful. You walk up, there's no partitions or anything. You can definitely interact with the teller. There is rooms to have private meetings, all glass, very well-lit. They have offices upstairs for other things, so I wish them all the best. They consolidated two branches, and I think they did a great job with that. Third, I'd like to mention that Deion Guthrie brought up something about NRT buildup.
NRD.
NRD buildup last week. And this is something Mr. Guthrie knew a lot about, and he's bringing back a bill on that. So if there were term limits, and Mr. Guthrie was term limited, he wouldn't be on this council. He wouldn't be able to speak about the NRD, bring out a bill, because none of us up here would have known anything about it or thought about it. But Deion did know that, and Deion's been off the council for 12 years, and Deion's --
Eight.
How many years?
Eight.
Eight. So Deion's come back. That's the institutional knowledge that you get when you have somebody that maybe comes back on a council after they've been off for a while. So I just want people out there to realize that you have a local representation of local people that know what's going on, and it's not easy to figure this all out. So I want to thank Mr. Guthrie for that information. I look forward to working with him on that bill. Let's see, Route 24 in Plum Tree, the lady in the back there, I'd like you to come see me if you're still here with that information. I did have a meeting with Shane Grimm on that and the permits and the process, but you had some other information. I'd be interested in that. And let me see what else here. So I think the biggest thing is we're going to have another large budget. Half of our budget's going to go to the school board. And obviously, this year, the people that are appointed aren't going to help, but a lot of these people are budget people. Unfortunately, there's no audit of anything with the school board of how that $600 million is going to be spent. And I, as a resident of Harford County, want to know, where all that money's spent, and it's never audited. It's never audited. So.
Yeah, that's wrong.
It's wrong. Okay.
That's right.
I'm done.
You done? Thank you, Mr. Jan Jardana. Mr. Riley?
Sounds like you're done there, Tony. Yes, I'd just like to comment on my brother-in-blue from Baltimore County. As most of you know, if you don't, I'm a retired Baltimore County police officer, and it looks like my brother-in-blue is actually going to lose a limb in that episode that happened this past weekend. So definitely keep him and his family in prayers. I did a lot of touring northern Harford County while we were off three weeks, getting to know a lot of the different associations up there. I met Debbie Comer from the Highland Community Association, where they do a lot of distribution of food. They also do childcare, and they do a lot of, they have a senior center there. So kudos to Debbie and what she's doing up there. And also, actually, I visited over on Route 40, the Business Association, so Leslie Stein over there, and she's doing great things with the Route 40 Business Association. Last thing I just want to cover is the Mason-Dixon Business Association. I was up there. They also do a lot of volunteer work that goes on up in the northern part of Harford County. So that'd be all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodles?
Thanks, Mr. President. I'd like to reserve my comments for next week, and I hope you all have a great Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. It was a busy week last week. That pretty much goes for every week, but I was able to attend the Route 40 Business Association get-together at Cokeley's in Haveny Grace, which was a lot of fun, and it was great to get to meet some people, hear about the work they're doing. It was also really encouraging to hear from so many people that they feel like they've made it back to where they were in 2019 and no longer experiencing a lot of those hardships that they've been going through financially and staffing-wise in the past few years. Along the same lines as Route 40, it was great for my staff to be present to hear about the walking and bike path that's being proposed to connect Haveny Grace and Aberdeen across Route 40. I think that's a great way to bridge those communities together and to give people access to their community in a way that's meaningful. I'm excited to learn more about that project as it continues to be finalized in the State Department of Transportation, so we can figure out what that's going to look like. But, you know, people are walking on Route 40, whether we make a walking path or not, and I would rather people be safe when they're walking, so I'm excited for that. I also attended the Haveny Grace State of the City address, which was wonderful. It was great to hear about all the work that they're doing, some of it in conjunction Some of it in conjunction with Aberdeen, you know, connecting their water and, and making it so that the city of Havity Grace, which is plentiful with water, can ship that across the, to this other city and eventually to the county. And I think that's a, a great initiative. And it was also great to hear about our, you know, micro-transit we have with the electric trolley that goes through Havity Grace. You know, 50% of the people who utilized that last year were local residents. They planted as a tourism attraction, but what they found was that locals were using it. You know, I've met so many people who live in St. John's Towers or the Grau who might not own a car and can't physically walk a distance anymore and the first time in decades, they're able to see the lighthouse, they're able to see the Maritime Museum, they're able to, to be a part of downtown in a meaningful way because of that transportation. I hope, we use the trolley as a model for the county and as, as we expand transportation that is usable to people. And then lastly, I just wanted to, you know, because somebody brought it up during their public comment, explain that with how the, the state law that passed works, there needed to be five votes in the affirmative on any appointment in order for it to be approved. So in structure and function, an abstention or a vote against made the same effect. It made one less vote in approval. The purpose of my abstention was to, to not vote against any particular individual person, but to point out that in, in my reading of the law, we were not following the letter of the law and ensuring that we were meeting the demographic makeup of our community. And so that's the purpose of that. Whether I had voted against or voted in abstention, it still served the same purpose of making sure that there was one less vote in favor of the process. So I hope that helps explain why that happened because there was a little bit of confusion during public comments on that. Otherwise, I hope everyone has a good week. Excited to see my, my wife for Valentine's Day in a few minutes after, you know, 13 hours in Bel Air. And, and I hope everyone has a good night, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Agenda item number 15, business from the President. As my colleagues, we continue to have, attend meetings all across the county every day. But I had the great honor to stand beside Sheriff Gaylor the other night along with members of his command staff during the sunset service in memory of the fallen deputies. And I, I just love the fact that we just never forget their sacrifices made and, and continue to honor them. And you're right, they did an outstanding job the other night, so they, they need to be commended for that, so. And then yesterday, we held our Route 40 Revitalization Committee meeting at Wooders Edge. It was extremely well-attended. We had over 60, 65 in-house of stakeholders and business owners. We had, county executive was there with members or directors there as Director of Administration, Director of DPW, Director of Economic Development. And he was able to give a presentation and talk about his desire to bring results to the Route 40 corridor. And what we plan on doing is to take his task force that he's put together now and trying to build on and then merge it with the Route 40 Revitalization Committee so that we can bring results to that area. We also had, Councilman Guthrie was there. Councilman Bennett, Heather, his aide, was there. We had Coppermine, the owner there, come and give a presentation and give an update on where he was at as far as the ball fields in Edgewood. And we had Hartford Community College there, Hartford County Public Schools. So it was a, it was a very positive meeting. And as I always say, this group does not have a silver bullet, but what it has is the ability to bring all of the partners and stakeholders together so they can share their success stories with one another and build on it. So I'm not sure when the next one will be, but I would say within probably the next six months, we'll have another one. And that one will probably be led by the administration. And with that, I think that's all I have to say. So with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
I stand corrected.
Thank you.